All right, so it is 7:00 and I want to welcome all of you to our very first post-COVID meeting, in-person meeting. So we've been meeting virtually for the last 17, 18 months since March of last year, 2020. So this is our first in-person meeting. We're hoping to get through it with few glitches, but bear with us if we do have a few. So with that, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Again, this is the City Council meeting for Minatrista, July 19th, 2021. First order of businesses, I'd like to remind all of you, if you have cell phones with you, please turn them on airplane mode or silent so they don't disturb our meeting here. And then also, would you please stand with me and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So again, thank you, and thank you all for being here this evening, and also for those who will be joining and watching later on. So first, I'd like to make some introductions. I'm Lisa Whelan, I'm the mayor, and next to me, to my left, are council members Pam Mortensen, Ann McGregor, and Kathleen Refkin. And just for those of you that may not have personally yet in-person met, are two brand-new council members, Ann McGregor and Kathleen Refkin. They are our new members since January, and this is their first in-person meeting. And then next to Kathleen, we have our, with WSB, our city engineer, Allison Fousky. And then sitting in the first row here, we have with us this evening Greg Johnson, also with WSB, and he'll be talking to us about the water. And then Adam Gabois is also with WSB, and he is also our Assistant Engineer. And also joining us this evening is Hannah Delker, and she's also a prodigy of WSB, also joining us this evening. And now to my, there we go, now it's on, to my right, we have our City Administrator Mike Barone. Sitting next to him is our City, is our Director of Administration, Ali Palfos. And then we have Community Director, Community Development Director David Abel. Then we have our Attorney Ron Beatty, he's with Kennedy and Graven. And then on the end, we have our Chief of Police Paul Falls. So with that, we have approval of our agenda. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Otherwise, a motion to approve the agenda as presented is in order.
Ms. Kathleen, a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. So Ms. Refkin made that motion, and Ms. McGregor seconded that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will signify with aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes, 4-0. This evening, Mr. Trumperlin is not with us, so we only have four council members. Next, we have special presentations. First, we're gonna do a recognition of our former Police Sergeant Mike Kokish. I say "former" just because he did officially retire on July 1st, and he's joining us this evening for this special recognition. So I'd like to read this, and this is recognizing the contributions and giving appreciation for Sergeant Mike Kokish. Whereas Michael Kokish was hired as a police officer on February 5th, 2000, after completing his BA degree in Criminal Justice and Business Management from the University of St. Thomas, and whereas Officer Kokish was promoted to Sergeant Kokish in the spring of 2007, and remained on the Minatrista Police Department at that rank until his retirement date of July 1st, 2021. And whereas Sergeant Kokish provided the residents of both St. Boniface and Minatrista with excellent service throughout his tenure as an employee of the city's police department, and now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Minatrista that we thank Sergeant Mike Kokish for all his hard work and dedication to the police department and to the city as a whole for his 21 years of service, and we wish him well in his retirement and future endeavors. Do I have a motion to adopt this resolution?
To move.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes, 4-0. I'd like to present this to Sergeant Kokish, former Sergeant Kokish. Now, do we just call you Mike Kokish from now on?
I'll snap a few pictures.
And then, do you want a picture with your family?
Sure.
Come on up.
Sure.
Father here.
You can get rid of the problem. All yours, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike. And I just want to say, so Mike does actually live in Minatrista, and so his service to the city won't stop here, right, Mike? But we really appreciate it. And I was on the council when you were first hired 20-some years ago, so it'll be a change not having you around. But I'm glad you live here and are still part of our community, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, for being council and staff. It's a great opportunity to work here, and it's a great team. If you look around with all the departments here and energy staff here, everyone sort of works together, everyone's solid people. Why, it's been a great career.
Yeah, well, good. You're welcome. Thank you. All right. And now I left my glasses on the podium.
Chief to the rescue.
Thank you. So next, we have our, next special presentation is one of the most exciting ones, is our second quarter financial update. Mister, so Mr. Grimm, our Finance Director, would normally do this, however, he's on vacation right now, and so Mr. Barone is stepping in, and he will do his best.
And that was very strategic of Mr. Grimm to line up the second quarter with his vacation. I am going to briefly, underlined, briefly describe what's in your packet. And if you have, the council does have any additional questions about what's in the packet of information related to the financial update, feel free to contact Mr. Grimm. He returns to work on Wednesday, and he would be able to answer any detailed questions you have. But this is a report that's through the second quarter, and since that's halfway through the year, I can tell you that both revenues and expenditures are tracking pretty close to 50%. The revenues are at 47% collected, compared to last year was 46%, so we're tracking quite well on that. And then on our expenditures, our general fund expenditures are at 48%, and I believe last year they were at 46%. So we're right on track. And as the council knows, we'll be entering into our budget season here, and have a couple of meetings in August, work sessions that will be dedicated to discussing the '22 budget. But so far in 2021, we're doing quite well. So again, any questions that are really detailed, you've called Brian Grimm, not me.
Any, any questions that Mr. Barone could maybe answer? All right.
Don't play stuff.
Okay, don't play. All right, thank you, Mr. Barone. So next on our agenda is a special presentation regarding our city water infrastructure and our water supply discussion. And I know we have some people here that are interested in this subject, and we have special people with us this evening that will be doing that presentation, I believe, Allison Fousky and Greg Johnson.
Yep. And Mayor, I'm going to start this. This is gonna be kind of a tag-team approach, so I'm gonna start out with just giving, for the benefit, not only our residents but our council, of kind of where we've been with water infrastructure and water treatment here in the city of Minatrista. Then we're gonna transition to PowerPoint presentation by Allison and Greg. They're gonna talk a little bit kind of about where we're going and what's required to get to where we want to go. And then we're gonna hopefully pose a few questions to the council about next steps for us, and it's probably gonna involve some educational things for our residents. So just to give you a start here, let me see, there we go. So the timeline will be including kind of the major mileposts from both, from 2011 up to the current date of 2021. I've omitted a bunch of stuff in here, and it's, not that it's not important, but it's just not the major mileposts, you know. Things that we, dollar amounts that we spent to buy land for where the water treatment plants are and that kind of stuff, feasibility studies, I kind of passed, passed over all that. We did an update to the Comprehensive Water Plan back in July of 2011, so virtually 10 years ago. And at that council meeting in July, I just did a screen grab of one of the maps on there. It shows a couple of things. It shows a water treatment plant, a well, and a water tower in the southwest part of Minatrista, not actually too far from where we ended up. And it also shows a future water treatment plant on Kings Point Road, which eventually did get built.
Will you be coming back to that?
I can, but we'll see. Let me, we just started.
Is there a connection between that proposed tower for St. Bonnie and the one that's on Kings Point?
This is not about St. Bonnie's water tower.
No, there's no.
This is the city of Minatrista's proposed water plan update back in 2011. It did show that we were...
I'm not planning to...
Yeah, no, but I'm just saying, that was our plan all along to build the stuff that you see going in down there right now. But we did talk to St. Bonnie at a certain point in time, and they were not interested in working together on, on water structure, so infrastructure.
Well, if I'm on the city side, can you bring some kind of connection between the St. Bonnie water tower and this city?
Let's go through the, the presentation.
That's okay.
I understand.
Yeah, it may become a little clearer as we move forward. And if you still have the question, let us, let us know. So in June of 2013, the council heard from WSB engineers at the time that they're gonna do, they did a presentation on the water treatment facility feasibility study, and the council directed staff to go forward with a pilot study and costs and a rate structure to determine how to pay for those future costs, which would be the infrastructure. In July of 2013, the council authorized the study discussed in 20, at June, at the June meeting, and asked the engineers to develop some alternatives to meet the projected 2030 water system demands, and was determined at that time that a standalone north system and a connected south and central system would be the best course of action, which is in fact what we did. There were a few twists and turns, as you'll see. 2013, the north system was determined by the engineers that there was sufficient existing capacity and storage, and we, and it could support itself, whereas in the south and central system, there was a need for some additional capacity and storage overall, mostly due to firefighting. And then the two systems, that's where we got most of our complaints on the drinking water quality. On December of 2013, they accepted the pilot study and authorized WSB to design two gravity filtration plants, the north system and the south water system being, a water plant being a little larger. And then in February of 2014, unbeknownst to our city staff and a few members of the city council, one council member working alone, brought forth what was called a value engineering study from a completely different engineering firm, Bolton &amp; Bank. They suspended the contract for final design for WSB, and then the value engineering timeline was created with Bolton &amp; Bank. And I'm purposely on not delving into the politics related to that, but that's actually what did happen. So there was a value engineering study in March, or February of 2014, and then in March, they presented a preliminary plan of a value engineering study to the council. And the council, at that point, decided that they wanted to explore reverse osmosis plant for a centralized, which means one plant only, and it actually is gonna be down the road from here at City Hall. And then at that point, WSB kind of removed themselves from our process, since they were, they're our city engineer and still are, but, and they were tasked with the design and implementation of the water infrastructure, but like I said, a council member overruled that. We had an election in November, the council, during November, also received an update from Bolton &amp; Bank, and they were now reporting a $19.5 to $21.5 million centralized water treatment plant to be located east of the public safety facility here. But after the election, and the election of Mayor Whelan and two other council members, the council stopped the project because of the escalating costs, and I'll have something at the end about the costs. So in January, with a new council seated, they began re-examining the issue once again. And so the council decided to move forward with a RFP for, and you'll see in a second, to go after and deal with the city's water system improvements that needed to be done. And we started our search for a water tower site, which is important to note. So there were eight firms that were solicited, six submitted bids or RFPs for the following projects. SEH was chosen. They're still in the process of finishing up with them. This is six years ago. They did the south-central water main connection, they, to help design the water treatment plants, both the north and south. And then the current and final piece of the puzzle is the southwest area water tower that's gonna be online here in the fourth quarter. So in July of '16, the south and central water main was connected, and the cost was about $3 million, which included all the right-of-way purchasing, which was minimal since they were decentralized plants, not a centralized plant. On both December of '16 and Feb of '17, the two water plants came on first. North plant came on in December, and the south plant in Feb. The total cost was about $9 million for the two plants, and those again were gravity filtration plants, not reverse osmosis. And we did have a delay in trying to find a suitable location for a water tower. That was difficult to do. David Abel could tell you more details about that, but in general, we explored many different sites. One was the Moss property. We wanted to buy an acre there. It was listed at $400,000 for that one acre. The Turk property was in what was called ag preserve, and wasn't gonna be available. This is back in 2017, so this is five, six years later. Wasn't gonna be available for that long of a period, so that got ruled out. There's an outlot in Hunter's Crest that was a 2.76 acre site that did not work out. Hunter's Pass, there was a property owned by the Klinkner family. They would not discuss selling a piece of their property with us. Lyle Park was kind of our fallback position, since we were getting frustrated to try to find a location. That's a 15.5 acre park. We really didn't want to use it, but that was a place where we were, if we couldn't find a spot, that's where we were gonna put it. We actually had a bid and purchase agreement with Commerce Bank, who owned an outlot called Outlot D. And because of some legal issues with the covenants, the Hunter's Crest HOA, and also some intense resident objection to having to live near a water tower, that purchase got derailed, and we did not go through with it. We finally did purchase a tract of land at 9,400 Highway 7. We bought a two-acre site, and it cost us about $1,000, $100,000. At that point, we began in the construction of the water tower. One of the most important things about building a water tower is painting it, and depending on when you start, you may or may not be able to avoid or not avoid the winter break. We were not able to. So it was a 27 total months. It's actually 20 months of construction, and we had to sit out seven months from November of last year to May of this year, where you can't do anything for painting, et cetera. So that water tower will go online at the end of October, and it'll cost about $2.5 million bucks. This is just kind of a graphic. You can see there's, that was, that's proposed Site 1B, they're right next to 1, and then you've got, that's Site 3, Site 4, Site 5. There was a whole bunch of sites that we looked at. That's actually an aerial view of the current site. These were the costs that the engineers provided back in the day. Site 1B is the one that got selected. As you can see, it was one of the two shorter water main connection lengths. That's in the second column there, only 1,100 feet, and that's important because there's a lot of cost to connecting the water tower with the water main. And it was also only 156 feet high. The shortest connection was 500 feet, but the tower, based on the topography of the land, had to be 192 foot high. So it was actually the least expensive option, which is why we built and bought that two-acre site. And this is just some options. And the most important things are the land availability and proximity to the 12-inch trunk main. And you can see the X's on those two ones that we, were the two lowest-cost ones. This is just a couple of pictures of, three pictures of it, approaching from the west directly dead-on, and then from the east of where the water tower site is now being, water tower is now being constructed. This is a look as of about a week or so ago. The left picture, you can see the cone, the top, is being built on the ground, and that'll be raised up here sometime in August and put on top of the tower. So I did talk about cost a little earlier. The original plan before 2015, which is when the new council was seated, was a centralized water treatment plant. That was 19.5 and growing to 21.5. We didn't really know the unknown cost of the right-of-way acquisition, but it was gonna be quite expensive, because you'd have to buy right-of-way between a lot of different parcels to get all this stuff down to one location, whereas we're using two locations. That was a $24 million in growing price tag, and the current plan at $14.5 million. Again, the water tower is gonna be built on both plans, but in general, it was the, the cost of building the plants. So councils made the right decision. That was our original intention back in 2011, which is where I started this PowerPoint, of what we were wanting to do. And again, like I said, there was some few other people that wanted to do something different for a while, and we had to, basically, this, it just came out that it was, wasn't the right thing to do financially. So that's what I have, as far as a PowerPoint goes, to just give a quick historical background of our water infrastructure. And at this point in time, I'm gonna ask Allison and Greg, eventually, he's gonna jump in here and talk a little bit about kind of the water supply and treatment and where we're going. So you kind of know where we've been and where we're at today, and now where we're going is kind of the next steps. Allison?
Thank you, Mike. Madam Mayor, members of the council, this evening we have Greg Johnson. He's the Director of our Water, Wastewater Group. And I asked Greg to attend this evening. He and I both felt it was really important to have his expertise at the meeting this evening. I can provide an overview of how the city plans for water infrastructure, kind of the process to go through and look at where we're at with our water supply. But, you know, Greg's really the expert in this, and so he's, he's available. He's, he'll be presenting part of this, this evening, to give the council a background on where we're at with some of our projections. So moving forward, I just wanted to give an overview of what this presentation will cover. So we'll take a look at what we're looking at for the south system and what the city has as far as water plans. There are a couple, a couple documents that we reference on a regular basis when it comes to infrastructure planning. We'll take a look at some of our recent water usages, and then as well as the restrictions that have been implemented this summer here, here this year. And we'll talk a little bit about the impact of weather. And then Greg will take over, looking at supply and infrastructure trigger charts. So taking a look at where we've, what the consumption has been to date and what the projections are, looking forward in the next few years as far as infrastructure needs in the city. And then we'll move on to look at some options to meet the demand of the water, the process to increase the output or to, to increase the amount of water into the water system to the residents of Minatrista. Then we'll talk a little bit about messaging and public education to the residents of Minatrista. So this is the south system. You can see it, it generally lies, the north and south Saunders areas, where well 5 is at the top of the slide there. That, that well came in service in '99. Once the south tower and water treatment plant came online, that well has only been used as a backup. And that's, that's typical in a city, so we have both well 4 and 5 as backup wells. And the reason that they're backup is due to aesthetic issues. So they're higher in iron and manganese. And so while they're safe to drink, any, any color in the water, any odor, any taste is not palatable to a lot of residents. And so the city identifies that, yes, that's not palatable, so we'll, we'll use those as a backup in an emergency. Again, the challenge being is that when those don't go through the water treatment plant, they're not treated for that iron and manganese, it generates a lot of calls from residents, and so there's a balance with that. We also have well 3 within that system. That's off County Road 44. As Mike, as Mr. Barone pointed out, we have the new water tower under construction, and then the Kings Point Road water tower and wells 6 and 7 at the water treatment plant site off Kings Point Road. So when...
Just a quick question. Is this new tower a part of the system now?
Yes.
And it's in St. Bonnie, right?
No, it's in Minatrista. It's in Minatrista, yeah. Can you...
St. Bonnie there, and I know...
Yeah, Minatrista surrounds St. Bonnie.
Yeah.
So you have to go through St. Bonnie before you get to the water tower.
Given I understand earlier that that wasn't gonna be a part of the system.
No, it is, yeah. So when we look at the planning documents that the city has in place with regards to water infrastructure, there are two, two components to that. One is the comprehensive plan, which was recently updated. And then we also have a water supply plan. And both those documents, they look at the city's growth, so where the population is at the time, and the projected growth, both with city staff and met council. And we use those to, we look at that information to go and make some projections on how, what type of improvements will be necessary and when. So we look at, for example, an average daily demand. So, you know, typical of what, I was thinking about this earlier today, Mike, when you think of your electricity use in the winter is a lot lower than it is in the summer, because you don't have your air conditioner running. So likewise, with a water supply system, you have your, your average demand, which is what you would use for showering, washing, et cetera. But then you have a peak demand that comes up in the summertime, and that's when we have irrigation. And so the, the, when we look at average versus peak, you have a multiplier from your average to get to your peak, so that we can plan the water system. So as I mentioned previously, in these, in the comprehensive plan and the water supply plan, we were looking at the use of wells 4 and 5 to help during those peak periods, when you have a lot of people irrigating, it's hot. However, with the dissatisfaction of that water quality, there's, there's a lot of challenges in bringing those, those wells online. In fact, I didn't bring it in here, but I had one of our Public Works employees today bring me a sample from, it was actually from well 3, which is the better well of 3, 4, and 5, and it was, it was cloudy. And again, it's safe, but it's, it's a palate issue with the consumer of the water. So when we look at the, the difference between an average day and a peak day, in Minatrista, we were seeing this year a 3.3 multiplier. So our peak, we were seeing 3.3 times the demand than, for water in, in the spring than you did in the winter. When we look at our water supply plan, which goes through the Department of Natural Resources, the DNR's threat, is, the DNR's threshold says that you should be around 2.6 for multiplier. So we're seeing a higher-than-anticipated per the DNR irrigation demand on the city of Minatrista system. So we look at those plans about every 10 years, just to make sure that our projections are accurate and make adjustments as necessary. So the next couple of slides here, I thought were interesting to show to the council and to the residents on how we got to restricting outside irrigation. So this, this graphic is from the city's data system that tracks the water tower elevations. So on the left-hand side, you see the water tower, the elevation of the water within the tower. So it's, it tops out at 40, some, just, just below 40 feet, all the way down to zero. Now, there are a couple of lines, and I apologize, the yellow one is very difficult to read, but there are two lines that were drawn in here for very good reason. One is the, the yellow line at 21 feet, and that is our tower level for fire protection. So when we, when we work through our water infrastructure, we want to make sure that there's enough reserve water in that tower in the event of a fire, that firefighters can hook onto the hydrant and have water to fight the fire. So that's, that's a key elevation. And then as well is the red line, which is at 10 feet. And the reason that's an important distinguish, at an important level to distinguish, is that's when there's a boil water order. And what happens is, when the water level gets to 10 feet, the pressure in the system, in the, in the pipes that are underground, is too low to keep that water moving. And so you get, that's when bacteria, it stagnates, and bacteria can grow, and then you have to issue a boil water order so that people can boil the water in order for it to be safe to consume. So we certainly don't want that. And as you can see from the beginning of June, as we move from left to right on the screen, we see... screen, we saw some very hot temperatures in June, no precipitation, and we saw that water tower level dip down below that twenty-one-foot threshold on the fourth, and then on the eighth, the elevation got to thirteen-point-one. And when we start seeing those three dips down below that fire protection threshold, that was when the first restriction went on so that we could maintain fire protection.
Which tower is that?
That is from the Kings Point Tower. So that is, Kings Point is the only tower that serves that south system currently.
And just for clarification, the south system also serves our central district. They're connected, so South Saunders area, North Saunders area, the Pinnacle Way, those are all connected to this system as well.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this one, this is what happens when we, when I didn't get a chance to look at it on the screen here, but this graphic, again, it shows that threshold at twenty-one feet and ten feet, once we got the revised watering schedule in place. So the revised schedule, instead of allowing irrigation every other day, allowed each resident on the city system to irrigate two days a week. And what we saw is, again, we saw the water tower elevations dropping below that twenty-one-foot threshold, and then on the June twenty-fourth, on the right-hand side of the screen, we saw it drop to ten-point-eight feet, and that's when the restriction went back on again, based on what we were seeing for the demand on these towers. So the first day that this, I can remember, on the sixteenth, the first day that the watering restrictions, the modified schedule was released, Superintendent Peters texted me and told me what the tower elevation was, only seven hours after the restriction was lifted, and it had dropped significantly. I mean, the people, and understandably, people were ready to start irrigating, but it dropped that tower elevation very significantly on the first day, and we weren't really seeing it recover, as this graphic shows. So we are in a drought. This information was the latest that I found last week when I was putting the presentation together. It was, the map was based on data from the thirteenth. I am not a meteorologist, but I can only guess that the drought conditions have expanded, since we haven't seen any significant rain. But you'll see Hennepin County there in green. So based on this data, we are in what is classified as a moderate drought, with the severe drought in the darker orange, starting to move into the northern part of Hennepin County. So we're seeing some weather system that, quite simply, these, our water system isn't designed for drought conditions, where we look at some averages, which, you know, most systems are. So when we look at that relationship between rainfall and water demands, we pulled this data based on actual city data. So the top line there is the city's water demand, and the bottom line is the rainfall. So over the past four years there, we've plotted, or pardon me, we have five data points on there. You can see as the amount of rainfall, the average rainfall decreased from 2016 to 2020, we saw the water demand increase, which, again, you would expect to see in the drier conditions, more demand on your water system. So with this, I'll turn it over to Greg. He'll go through some of the trigger charts and looking at our distribution system.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Greg Johnson, WSB. The next few slides, I'm going to talk about the planning component for a water system and what we look at when we're sizing water systems. And when we're sizing a system, we commonly use what's called the trigger chart, which is this graph up here. And it's a good way to illustrate your historical and projected water demands with respect to the capacity of your system. And so if you look at this graph here, the kind of lower black horizontal line, that's your treatment capacity for the south systems. That's right about just a little under 1.5 million gallons per day. And if you look at the green line above, that's your water supply capacity. So you can see the supply capacity is significantly higher than the treatment capacity, and that's mainly because wells three and four, three, four, and five pump directly into the distribution system, and they're only used as backup wells. So those wells are not being treated at this time. So when you're sizing a system, it's important that you're, you know, both the green line, which is your supply, and your black line, the treatment, is actually above your demands. And that previous slide that Allison was showing, you can see how, because of the drought conditions, the last few years, we haven't had a lot of rainfall. So if you look at those little yellow circles down there, you can see they've increased over time. If you look at the straight-line projection, there's a little line. When it gets to the point where that little slanted line on the lower-left-hand corner crosses the black line, that's when you're exceeding your treatment capacity.
Can I just interject just for a moment? I think it's important to distinguish what we mean by treatment. So the well water in Minatrista, it can be treated at the wellhouse. What Greg's referring to, as far as treatment, means water going through the water treatment plant, so it's treated for the iron and manganese, et cetera. So just for those that may be in the audience or watching, the water is safe to drink, it's treated, it's just not through the treatment plant.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying that. And, yeah, so when we're treating water, it's more for, to improve the aesthetics of the water. So we're taking out the iron, which makes your plumbing fixtures brown, we're taking out the manganese, that's what makes your fixtures black, stains your laundry. Those are the contaminants we're treating, but there's nothing health-wise that we're concerned about. Next slide, please. So if you take the same chart and you compare it to the city's comprehensive plan, if you look at that kind of slotted long right line, kind of at an angle on the bottom there, you can see, those are the projections that came out of the comp plan. So you can see those are lower. So what that tells us is that because of the, you know, the lack of rainfall we've had in recent years, these projections are shooting up at a faster rate. Now, unfortunately, we can't predict what the next number of years are going to be for rainfall. Nobody can really predict that. But however, if we continue on that same trend that we're showing on the lower-left-hand corner there, we're going to exceed our capacity here, probably within the next couple of So there are options to meet your water demands. The first one is to increase your treatment capacity. That's either expanding existing treatment or building separate water plants to maybe treat some of the local well or remote wells. The other thing is increasing your supply capacity. But one thing to keep in mind is when you're increasing supply capacity, you're always trying to achieve optimal water quality, too. So sometimes, expanding treatment and capacity go hand in hand. And then the last important part of this is the messaging towards the public, and it gets on to education and water conservation. You know, how do we do more efficient water irrigation? How do we water at the right times of the day to try to use less water? So one thing that we recommend the council doing is doing a further analysis of expanding treatment, and the first one, we look at expanding your saltwater plant that you just built, see if it's possible to expand that with additional capacity. The other option is to look at constructing a water treatment plant near the existing untreated wells, so those are wells three, four, and five. And then the last one is constructing a new water plant near future wells, so that if, you know, ideally, you want to have the wells as close to the treatment plant as possible, so then you can, it doesn't require less piping in between those two facilities.
I think that's why we drilled the two new wells by the treatment plants on Kings Point Road.
Yeah.
The well five and six.
Well six and seven.
Six and seven, yeah.
Yep. So when you're planning for a well is, there is a process you have to go through, and we actually went through it from back when we were involved in the design of six and seven. And the first thing you have to do is you have to construct a test well, so you can determine what the pumping capacity is in that location, and determine the water quality, does it going to require treatment or not. And then the next thing, which is becoming more of a challenge today, is getting an appropriation permit from the DNR. And then the last thing, it has to go through the plan review for the Minnesota Department of Health. So if you look at that typical timeline, it's usually about twelve to eighteen months, just to implement a well.
I'll pop back in here unless there's any questions that...
I just have one question. So he said well three, four, and five, and you just said four and five. So...
So four and five, thank you for asking that question. So four and five are the two wells that, there are issues with the iron and manganese, and staff prefers not to use those as backup, but the well three is used to supplement the water treatment plant capacity.
Yeah, and one thing is those three wells are actually, all three of them are drilled in a different formations. So like, well five is really a shallow, glacial drip well. And then three is a Tunnel City water lock well, that's the same as six and seven. And then well four is actually on the side of the well. So that's actually the...
That's the deepest, I think.
That's the deepest formation on the Twin Cities.
Yeah.
And the challenge with that well is it does have restrictions as far as how much water you can pump out of it, and typically, it contains natural radium. So then you're possibly treating another contaminant, so...
The things you get to learn when you're on council, interesting. So one of the components, when we look at increased water supply, Greg had mentioned this, is you have to get an appropriation permit from the DNR. And I pulled this from the statute, in that when, before even applying for a permit to get a new well, the communities are required to demonstrate that we've encouraged water conservation and water use demand reduction, so that we've employed some public education components to reduce that demand on the system, so that we're not just asking for more water. We've done our best to educate folks on being good stewards of the treated water that we have already permits for. So when we look at public education, there are a few components that we have to draw from. One is to provide some information on water-saving tips, and I know Ms. Polfus has been sharing some of that information through the city's social media and the website. Another component is looking at established lawns, depending on the source, between one and one and a half inches of water per week. How do you measure what your system's putting out? So it's getting that message out there that you're, I don't know what point it changes, but let's say your five-year-old lawn does not need the same amount of water as your fresh sod does. So making sure that you get those things, your irrigation system reprogrammed. So when we look at an example, over in Woodland Cove, I just kind of took a look and said, well, it looks like most properties are somewhere around seventy feet wide and one-hundred-and-twenty feet deep. And if you irrigate half that property, because the other half is house landscaping, hard landscaping driveway, if you irrigated one inch per week, you would use about 10,000 gallons per month. So that's, you know, we kind of use that as a baseline.
But that includes your household water as well.
That's just irrigation.
Oh, just irrigation, okay.
Yep. Again, that's an average, but we just wanted to give council kind of an idea of how much water goes on to the lawn, based on that one-inch guideline. So we also take a look at, as I mentioned earlier, that multiplier. If we're seeing properties within the City of Minatrista where their summer water usage is over two and a half, or 2.6 times their winter one, well, you know, maybe they're over-irrigating. And what can we do? How can we convey that message if we can target some of those properties and say, hey, you know, give them the information, give them, you know, understand why, where this information's coming from, what's the genesis of sharing this information, and why we're asking people to take a look at some of their water use. So another component to look at with regards to trying to reduce the usage of your average customer is to look at your utility rates. So currently, the city has a tiered rate structure, most, as I believe all cities in the metro do, that are on a, that have a water distribution. So the idea is that the users within that lower tier pay a lower rate per thousand gallons, and then you move up through there. So included in this example is the cost for your higher-end user for each of the tier, just so that the council can kind of see financially what's the impact when you move from one tier to another. So likewise, from the residential system, on the next slide, there's the tiered water system for commercial. You'll see the usage rate for commercial is higher per thousand gallons than it is for residential, and the tiers are at different cutoff quantities as well. And so there, again, there's some examples showing what that user would see for a utility bill if they were on the higher end of each of those tiers. And then lastly, there's the school rate system. So you'll see this, it's, again, it's bumped down lower, and what the bill would be based on what tier they're in. So if the, the usage rate per thousand gallons, that third column from the left, if the council wanted to take a look at, is that an appropriate rate? Staff would recommend doing a utility rate, utility rate study, to see how the city compares to others. Is this an appropriate rate for what your system's at? Is there an appetite to change those rates? That's another option that the council could look at, in addition to some of the public education components that we've spoken about. And I think Mike, Mr. Barone had some additional comments.
I do. So with this all happening with a very hot June that we had this year, I think we had thirteen or fourteen days over ninety, and two inches of rain the whole month. What I did was ask Dawn, who handles all our utility billing, to give me a spreadsheet, non-spreadsheet hat...
Can you make it a little bit larger?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So let me walk people through this. So this is city water only, not people that are on wells. So there are total residential properties, there's seventeen hundred of them. And of those seventeen hundred, if you work your way down, there's, the peaking factor, as Allison spoke about in her presentation, there was the 2.6, that's the DNR level, and the 3.3 is our average, which is high. But we, of the seventeen hundred something, we've got four hundred or about a fourth of our total properties that are already using 3.3 or more, peaking factor, or times their winter allowance. And then under 3.3 is three-fourths of them. And then I further broke down the, so work your way down the column to the green and yellow box, the breakdown of the 3.3, there's thirteen hundred. Two-hundred-and-fifty-seven are between 2.6 and 3, and then 2.6 or less is sixty, is a thousand something. So if you look at that orange box, that adds the four-hundred-and-sixteen there in the blue box, four-sixteen, and it adds the two-hundred-and-fifty-seven that are between 2.6 and 3.3. That's about thirty-nine percent of all our residential properties are using more than the 2.6 factor, peaking factor. That's a lot of people using a lot of water.
Are those larger blocks playing a game?
That's just all properties on city water. It doesn't have anything to do with the size of the lot.
They're going to vary.
It's going to vary.
The lots are going to vary, yeah.
And so on the two right columns, you have the north system and the south system. As you can see, and as I think I've mentioned to previous councils, that we're seeing all our growth in the south system. Nineteen of every twenty, or ninety-five percent of all new homes built are connecting to the south system. And you can see as far as just the over 3.3, it's about a four-to-one ratio, eighty-one to nineteen of, over that. And then for the 2.6, it's about that three-to-one, that seventy-five to twenty-five ratio. So if you want to go to the next slide, Ally, there's one more, if you click down. Nope, just, yeah, I guess you could scroll down, but there you go. Might have to shorten that up. So I added an additional column. And on the right means, if you saw the tiered water structure, zero to twenty-five, twenty-five to fifty, and over fifty, so these are people or properties that are using over 50,000 gallons just in quarter two. And so there's two-hundred-and-forty-eight. Two-thirds of them are using over 3.3, and the rest are under that. So basically, what we're saying is, it doesn't really matter how big your properties or small your properties, we're getting mall shapes and size on all levels, but there's properties there that are using a lot of water, and they're exceeding by far the... the, the peaking factors that are built in by the DNR and, and what our current average is. So our goal, as Ms. Falsky mentioned, is to do some education. So one of the things we'd like to do, not bore them with a bunch of graphs, but just to tell them that we need to see what we can do about conserving water. And I think people feel like it's an unlimited resource, and it's not. And we're seeing that in some of those trigger charts that show the increase, the steady uprise in usage. You're seeing it with the other information that was presented a little earlier. And what's going on is that we would like to identify all employees or all residents and give them some information, but we'd really like to target some of the people that seem to be using a lot of water and say, you probably don't have to. As Ms. Falsky had in that one slide, if you have kind of a normal lot in Hunter's Crest or Turtle Creek, you could probably get by with, what was it, $10,000, $10,000 gallons in a month. So in a quarter, we build quarterly, that's going to be 30,000 gallons. That puts you in that middle tier, plus your other home usage. So this is second quarter. Third quarter is usually the hottest. You know, you have July, August, September. July and August are generally hotter than June. Now, we had a really hot June, which is why we have this water ban. But as you can see, based on going back to where we've been with water structure and where we're going, what we need to do, I think the most important thing is to try to educate our, our public about trying to conserve water, not to spread so much on their lawns.
Thank you. So what I'm going to do is, I just want to make a couple of clarifications, and then I'll open it up for questions by the council and maybe a few people out there. So in answer to your question, I think it was a little confusing. One, St. Boniface is a separate city, and they have their own water tower and their own water system within their city boundaries. What we were talking about, and this was a little confusing, we have a new water tower, but you have to go through St. Bonnie because we completely surround St. Bonnie. So you have to go through St. Bonnie, and the new water tower is there. That new one that is under construction is going, is connected to the King's Point Water Tower and that treatment plant. So just, it was a little confusing, I think. The other thing I want to clarify, currently, we have a DNR allocation. And that's an allocation based on the number of residents or water users that are on our system. And when we go over that allocation, there are some things that happen. What happens? Do we pay penalties? Do we pay fines? What happens when we go over that allocation?
Madam Mayor, that's a great question. I'm going to ask Greg if he can provide some clarification on that.
Sure. Madam Mayor, there are penalties when you exceed your appropriation permit, and it is dependent on your population and, and how much you exceed it. There's a rate component, I can't tell you exactly what it is for Minatrista-
Okay.
-at this time, but there are penalties. Let's have some.
Yeah. And I just wanted to make that clear because I think a lot of people, or some people in our city think, oh, if I pay for the water, I should be able to just pump as much as I want or use as much as I want. Whereas, we as a city cannot just keep pumping in depth, you know, as much as we want because we're allocated a certain number of gallons every year, and when we exceed it, we have to pay extra, and there's some serious fines. But also, as Ms. Falsky pointed out, if we want to, and we will need to, dig a new well, drill a new well, then we have to go through certain steps, and they look at our current usage as well. So for all those reasons, it's important to try and conserve and stay within our allocation. So that, those are just some comments I want to make. I'm sure there's questions. Council, do you have questions?
Yeah, a lot of questions. This is the land of lakes, and we don't have any water?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
This is the land of lakes, and we don't have any water? Does that mean all of Minnesota doesn't have any water?
Well, I can tell you-
Two types of water.
... a unique year. I don't recall seeing these conditions since 1988.
Okay. But there's two types of water. There's groundwater, which is in the ground underneath in the aquifers, and there's surface water. Land of lakes, we have a lot of surface water, and a lot of the surface water is not drinkable per se unless you put it through reverse osmosis systems, such as Minneapolis and St. Paul, they use the Mississippi River, for instance. So what happens is, we, we, and most cities, use groundwater. We tap into the aquifers that are underneath the soil, okay? Just-
Yeah.
No, that's helpful. I don't know much about water at all.
And there's different aquifers, so.
Yeah, that's, that's a great explanation, Madam Mayor. One thing with aquifers is they're totally dependent on recharge from, from rainfall and snowmelt.
Okay.
Too, so I mean, if, if you have a year where you have less snowmelt, less rainfall, the aquifers are going to go down. And that's something that the DNR closely monitors over time, but historically, we have been lucky in Minnesota compared to other states. It just seems in the past few years because of lack of rainfall, this has been a unique time.
And the DNR has been finding out that the aquifers are not recharging at the same rate that we're taking the water out. So the recharge is less than with the rate we're taking out, and if we continue on the same vein, then we have to go to other sources such as surface water eventually. So that's, that's what, what we're looking at. They're looking at actually trying to recharge aquifers, and, but that's a whole nother story. So.
That's an interesting story.
Yeah.
Well, and Madam Mayor, I don't know if you want to talk at all about what happens with, I mean, we're talking about sprinkling, but our, our water that goes down the drains and where that ultimately ends up, I don't know if you want to touch on that, about how you're, you're getting to the point of the recharging the well, and that we're not doing that currently.
Right, right. Well, and when you talk about impervious surfaces too, again, more impervious surface, more water goes into basically our sewer systems, which then eventually ends up in the Mississippi River, basically, because all of our, or, or maybe it goes into a lake, but it doesn't go into the ground. They, so there's different techniques that you can use in order to, am I talking too much?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. There's different, well, there's different techniques, and we should look at this too, that you can use in order to make the, the water stay on the ground where it lands, okay? So you can do soil corrections, you can do more dirt, you can do aeration. So one of the things that we've done here, we say, or we try and do, we tell the builders, once they've, they've built, they're supposed to aerate the soil before they put their, their sod down, because that will also help penetrate the soil. But there's other, other things, less pervious surfaces, you can do pervious pavers versus impervious pavers. Those are the type of things that will also help regenerate the aquifers. Maybe you know of other things too, but-
No, I think you summed it up very well, actually. To, and there are parts of the country like that, that they, they depend on superficial recharge.
Right.
To try to contain the, the groundwater, so like the mayor was saying, it doesn't flow downstream into our sewers and away from our, our land, too. And those are, those are great ways to try to keep the water intact.
And there's other things that our people are starting to do too. Now, it wouldn't help so much this year because of the drought system, but they're using the Nert ponds or the stormwater ponds, and they're drawing out of those for their irrigations, irrigating needs. But again, in this year, probably they're going to be pretty dry, but that's another thing that we could also think about implementing. It's a little more costly, but upfront anyway, but that might be another thing to consider doing.
But Medina's been doing that for 20 years.
Yeah, yeah. And rain gardens, you can plant rain gardens, which will also help. Well, a rain garden is, basically, you're doing a soil correction, and, and, and you, you kind of put in a bowl, if you will, so, and then the water kind of collects there, and it drains down into the soil. And it, and usually, the soil that you create is, it makes it drain faster. And then the other thing that you, you plant more, you plant, plantings that will filter the water down. I've been in water a while. Maybe too long. So, but any, yeah.
Yeah, how much does a water, how much does a reverse osmosis plant cost?
Well, almost twice.
Well, I had it on my power plant, it's about twice. It was up to 21 and a half million bucks.
Yeah, the, the challenge with a reverse osmosis plant or any type of membrane plant is that it only filters a certain percentage of the water. So typically, in our own system, 20% of the water gets rejected from the membranes. So that ends up going into your sanitary sewer system, so it's more, it's more waste going to Med Council in this case. And, and then in addition, because you're wasting 20%, you have to make that up with additional well capacity. So in some cases, you have to drill more wells to be able to use membranes.
And generally, correct me if I'm wrong, but the reverse osmosis plants are really beneficial when you live in an area of the state, maybe agricultural-based, where there's a lot of chemicals being put in the ground for agriculture, or if you live maybe by like a 3M plant, I'm not saying here, but other places where there's manufacturing, and there's a lot of chemicals in the plant, in the groundwater. And so reverse osmosis will get that out, but as Greg mentioned, you kind of burn a lot of water. By, gravity filtration is by far the less expensive and completely appropriate for cities like Minatrista. We don't have any, any reason to believe that our soil's been contaminated, you know, over the years by whatever, so.
There's only about eight, I think, reverse osmosis systems in the entire state. And I know Minneapolis and St. Paul have a, it's not exactly a reverse osmosis system, but it's a system that, that cleanses the water. Does St. Cloud, I think, use it too anyhow, but-
No, St. Cloud is actually, they're converting to biological filtration.
Okay.
Right now, too, and Minneapolis does it too also because they're treating surface water. They're using it to, as a prevention method for giardia and things that could potentially be in the river.
Right.
In addition to, so that's the main thing. They're actually doing a downstream softening process, too. So it's mainly just to, to treat giardia viruses, those type of things. But it's, like the city administrators were saying, it, it's a technology that's more common in, when you're dealing with minute contaminants, try to treat the water, and in some cases, softening.
Right.
Too, but if people are treating, if they're softening their own water already in their houses, you're already taking care of that.
What's the capacity of the south water treatment plant once the new water tower goes on?
Well, the capacity doesn't change, and so it's still at about 1.5 million gallons per day that it can do in a 24-hour period. The one thing with the storage, the, the storage is going to help, because it's going to, it's going to help you get past peak days. The challenge is when you have multiple peak days, where you go through several days or a week, then it gets to the point where it doesn't matter how much storage you have, it comes down to how much supply and true capacity you have. Storage will help in a short-term basis, but not on a long-term basis.
So that was why you saw his three options. One of them was to expand the south plant, and another one was to kind of go to those microplants near the wells. But the third one, which is, I think, what we've been planning to do, is to add a water treatment plant on the site of the current, soon-to-be-finished water tower. But again, that's going to be a DNR-approved, if we're going to add a water treatment plant, we're probably going to have to drill another well there. And they're going to have a hard time approving us for a well if we keep our peaking factor at 3.3 when they're saying 2.6 is what you need to do. So again, the educational thing's going to be based into trying to get our water infrastructure to continue to move forward, so. That's our issue.
So I'm going to, any other questions? Okay, I'm, I'm just going to ask, well, briefly, if you have a question, any, from the audience? Okay.
Can you come up to the podium, please?
Can you come up here and then we, just state your name and address for the record, if you would, please?
My name is Jerry Water. I live at 4250 Lotus Drive, just north of the MNI development.
Yeah.
Your first house past MNI.
Okay.
And the concern I have, and I hear from everybody that walks by, is MNI's going to be building in that field selfless, a lot of them, and they build four or five at a time.
Right.
How are we going to keep up with that? And I just heard him say that the south capacity doesn't change.
No, you're correct. It doesn't change, but again, the plan all along, as you saw from that first slide in my thing, was we knew that we're going to have to add some, a water tower for volume and fire suppression, and also a water treatment plant, so.
The only thing I want to know is what comes first? Does the building come first, or is the capacity first?
So the, so just for clarification, the water treatment plant, the capacity doesn't change, but our storage capacity will double. I think the, the water-
But in the net, it's no change.
Well, that, that helps, it helps. And then we'll have to do a new, another well and another treatment plant, probably sooner than later.
A treatment issue and a well issue on the short term, right?
Yes.
Potentially, yeah. But, you know, when you have these super drought conditions like we're having here, we had in June.
I'm coming at this just from what I've seen and what I've read.
Yeah.
Level of aquifers, and, you know, the worst aquifer in the Twin Cities is at Jordan, and that's on the east side primarily.
Right.
That's the one that's going down. The ones in this area are not necessarily dropping, so we have to-
Yeah.
I think we have to serve the community. And my concern is, you know, in our neighborhood, they're building four or five houses at a time.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah.
And I don't know how you keep up with that. I mean, and if you talk to the DNR, I think you have to talk in terms of per unit, and if your projection is a lot more units, and if, if you're just talking from a 3.3 on existing, you don't have a story, you don't have anything you can sell to. You have to understand who the conservation ring, but then you have to talk on a per-unit basis and what's your unit going to be two years from now, three years from now.
Yeah, the, the allocation is based on a, you apply annually, I believe.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, if I may ask Ms. Pofus to bring up the, in the presentation, that trigger chart that showed the projections, I think that's, that's a good graphic to take a look at. And so if we're looking at what we're projecting in the comprehensive plan, when we look at how we plan the water system, it's for that orange dash line where it crosses. And so that's where we make the projections on where we need to increase our, our treated supply. The challenge is, is right now, the dash, the dotted line, is we're seeing the demand is a lot higher than what, what we've been planning for, and that's mostly to do with the-
And that's, that's my concern.
And that's due to the drought, yeah.
How do you make that case with the DNR? This is what's, our growth is-
Right.
Far out expanded what we expected it to be, so.
Yeah.
I think it's more of a combo platter. It's not ju-
I'm sorry.
I think it's more of a combination of things. It's not quite just the growth, but it's the growth and the fact that we're seeing higher usage as well.
Yeah, and that kind of surprises me because most of the MNI lots are post-education, really, you know, and-
Sure.
Right.
But, and so the, the footprint there is relatively small. Grass area at the house, they do have the catchment basements, which are great for the aquifers, and they have, have to have those. But I'd, I'd volunteer to be of any help I can. I'm an engineer.
Okay.
And I managed to borrow a $75 million capital budget on an ongoing basis when I was working, so I'm, I'm not stupid, and I'm not here to be emotional, but I'm afraid that we're behind the curve here, and I'm just trying to raise that issue, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Or Greg, did you have any?
I have a question.
Okay. Can you-
Go ahead, Greg. My name is Steve Decollis, I live at 5415 Yellowstone Trail, Palm Point Development. So if we've got this situation, and this chart kind of points that if we don't have something done by 2027, we've got a problem. So how long does it take to get additional treatment capacity online?
Greg? Couple years?
Yes, that's a good question. It, it is at least two years, too, from the time you go through the perimeter design and the design phase, that's anywhere from six to nine months, and then you go through two months of bidding, and construction is usually about 15 months. So you're, you're looking at at least two years.
So it's now at three, and we're there.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so that might be something you want to do. The other thing you might want to consider is the, kind of putting a moratorium on new building permits for residential.
Well, how about watering for re, new residential?
You've got to do that too, right?
Yeah.
Because the momentum is there, you just heard, they're building four or five at a time up on King's Point. So we can do both, but I strongly encourage you to consider putting a moratorium on new building permits for residential. And then what are the- And then what are the options to expand the treatment capacity in the south treatment plant?
Well, that would be one thing that we could be looking at.
Who, who built it?
Um, S C H was the, um, engineering firm that, that designed it.
Okay, so they wouldn't be able to tell you if it's expanded.
Right. I know the north, yep, the north water treatment plant is expandable, that we designed that way. Uh, the south water treatment plant, we didn't design as an expansion potential. There may still be. What was planned was another freestand or separate unit, another treatment plant that was originally planned, so.
And my last question, is a copy of this presentation going to be available?
Yeah, we planned on excising this out and placing it on our-
Good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to say one more thing.
Okay, quick.
I think, get right with it. I think there's a total lack of knowledge out there about what you guys know about this. There is just no information out there.
And that's good to know.
Restrictions and the plan, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think, I think you need-
Yep.
And I know it sounds like we don't have a plan, but with the water tower going in and also talking about drilling a new well and also having a plan for that third water treatment plant that's always been in the plan. And we always said it's gonna be sometime between five and 10 years, depending on growth. And we're seeing, and right now, we're at the five-year point.
Right.
So, um, we're, we're gonna be looking at that. So we've got the plan, we just need to start, um, working more on it.
Yeah, I think the plan relative to what your role protection is, I think that's what we're pressing.
Yeah, sure, yep.
True.
Okay.
I know some of the townhomes of Woodland Cove, the ones closest to Highway seven are using the storm treatment ponds to water. Are there plans for some of the new M and I homes to use those too in phase four and five?
They're, they're using all of them now. Yep. All of the, they're converting all of the stormwater ponds to use for irrigation.
Okay. And then what happens if we can't drill a well near another water treatment plant?
Well, that's a good question. And that, and that's really where the test wall comes into play. Cause when we drill a test wall, we, we, uh, go through a pumping test to see how many interferers within adjacent wells. So we'll, we'll know what the interference effects are. And, uh, but there are cases where you can only drill somebody wells within a certain area. Too, and, uh, sometimes they have to be separated. And when they do have to be separated, it requires more piping to be able to pump that well to the treatment plant. So that, that's where the cost can increase.
Do we know how many wells St. Bonnie has?
I think they-
Do they just have more?
I'm guessing they have one. They have a treatment plant as well.
Yeah, yeah.
So maybe one or two. They only have like, how many resi- they only have like 2,200 residents. And so I'm guessing like 800 homes, maybe?
It's just, that's a lot of wells in that area.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, we don't have, we don't have any wells down there yet.
Right, but if St. Bonnie's got more than one, and then there's the ones on King's Point. So there's only so many, I would guess in a, you know, five mile area you can put in.
There is. I mean, it, you know, I would, you know, restricted by less than five miles, but I would say it's a matter of, you know, thousands of feet. To, you know, rule of thumb, you know, you wanna keep your walls, you know, at least 1,000, 1,500 feet apart. Too, but again, it comes down to doing this test, well, testing the aquifer and then seeing what it actually is, probably interfere with each other, so.
The other thing we can look at is, um, what is more cost-effective, but also what is maybe more, um, timing-wise effective, expanding the south water treatment plant? You know, we can look at that option or building a new one. Um, when you expand the south plant, I don't know if we can, we'd have to look at that. But, um, the other thing you could then, you have your two wells there. Maybe you could put well number three or, uh, well number five or whatever into, into more operation because then you have more treatment capacity. It's not, they're not using those two wells right now. They're using them as backups because of the manganese and iron. But if you have another treatment plant, you might be able to use them. That might be another option.
Yeah, and Mayor Council, uh, you don't necessarily have to do one or the other. I mean, you could look at both options. You could look at expanding and also look at building new. I mean, I don't think there's anything harmed by that. It'd cost you more money, but, you know, I mean, those are your options, so you would, you don't have to wait till you find out about one to start the others. That's what I'm saying.
Right. All right. Any other questions?
Um, Madam Mayor, just, just as a point of clarification, so from staff perspective, um, the, the concerted effort on the education component, is there a desire of the council to take a look at some options for expansion of the water treatment plant? Or is there a preference to just see how the water, um, conservation efforts play out?
I think we need to look into expanding it.
Yeah, so our, our original plan, like I stated, was after we've completed the, the north and south water treatment plants, um, the idea was within five to 10 years, we were gonna be adding, we knew we would have to add another one. So I don't think it's too early to start looking at, at those options, um, now. And we would then be drilling another well as well.
Test well, I would.
Test well. Well, you first do the test well and then see where you go from there.
Do you need D N R approval to drill a test well or just to put in a permit? How does that work?
Both.
Oh, excuse me. Um, yeah, typically it will work with the D N R, but it, it, the approval process really comes more around the production well. Um, you have to get the D N R, um, approve the production and, and the health department to approve it too. But test wells, there's usually no restrictions.
Okay.
Yeah.
They're just basically telling you what kind of water there is, how deep you have to go, um, how much it'll pump, the capacity, that kind of thing. So. And we, we had to do that for the two wells we dr- um, did over on King's Point Road. So, staff, what do you need?
So, I think Ms. Fousky is, is diving in on the engineering piece. I'll dive in on the education piece. So would you like us, I would hope you would like us to, um, begin putting together some materials that would be something that you maybe take a look at before we send out, uh, educational pieces that would be to all residents. Um, as our one, uh, participant said tonight, you know, a lot of people don't understand a lot of this. I don't understand a lot of this and I work here. I'm not an engineer. But I, I understand when I look at numbers that we're, a lot of people using a lot of water. Um, and I think what our goal would be to educate them on better conservation issues. And then what, as I think I mentioned a little earlier, one of the things we may wanna do, and I, actually this idea came from Ms. Fousky when she was working in the public sector, is they actually targeted, uh, the top 100 or 150 or whatever it was. I wouldn't call them abusers, high-end users, let's try that. Uh, but they're using a lot of water. And when you look at the numbers, it, it's kind of staggering. I mean, hundreds of thousands of gallons for one property, you know, and it's like, it could be a big property. We don't know the conditions of the property. We don't know if they got 10 kids and they're all home from college. I mean, you just don't know all the circumstances, so. Uh, but nonetheless, I think it be, might be worth tackling and trying to find, uh, to target the ones that, um, are using a lot of water and try to point, maybe they don't care. I don't know. I hope they do, but, uh, the idea is just to give them some education, some addition, additional education that would help us out.
Yeah, I like that idea. Right now, you can, in our neighborhood, you can see who's not, is continuing to be watering, yes.
And that's happening in other neighborhoods too, so.
And we're seeing that all over. I mean, it's, it's coming. I mean, maybe we were first with the water ban, but we're not gonna be last, so. If this drought basically keeps up.
So I think we need to do the dual track here. Um, engineering needs to come back with a proposal, um, to start, um, thinking about expanding treatment and, and well, and then the educational part of it. We don't need D N R approval to do another treatment plant. We would just need D N R approval to do another well. So. And then, um, I also think when we do the educational piece, we definitely need to also educate the people on, in, in a very quick, simple manner, where we've been, what we've done and what our plan is. Because I think people are concerned and we wanna make sure that they know we're on top of it, so.
Yeah, no, it's, that's a good point. I mean, I had, I don't know, a handful of adamant complainers when we implemented the first ban and I walked through this PowerPoint with you all tonight, but I kind of summarized that in an email reply. I actually got a thank you from one guy. He said, he was ready to kind of fire us all and, and then said, I think you're doing a great job, you know, so I think it, knowledge is power in this arena. So I think it's worth trying to briefly, if we can, describe what we've been trying to do over the last 10-plus years and what we hope to do going forward. But what we're also going to be asking of them to help us out with, and that's to conserve a little more, so.
Okay.
Also, on the stormwater ponds-
I think you should offer free grass seed next to all, so. Cause it's dead, isn't it?
Dead. Another cause.
On the stormwater ponds, it's being done in Woodland Cove, right, where they're using that, that water for irrigating. Um, is that just Woodland Cove that's doing that right now?
Mm-hmm.
Is this something we could expand that information and knowledge to do in Hunter's Crest and other, um, neighborhoods that have the capability of doing it?
Potentially, I think-
Can you retrofit it or not?
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna say. I think it's easier when you install it versus retrofit.
I mean, it can be done, but it's very expensive, yeah.
What's that?
It can be done, but it's expensive.
Like expensive life?
A lot. No, but, um, I mean, I mean, that's up to them. I mean, we could cer- certainly tell them, but I think the likelihood, I mean, that, we've had them look at other, we've had HOAs explore that in the past. Um, and the problem now, I mean, there's a drought, the ponds are empty.
Right.
You know, I mean, you know.
So one of the things Alison and I talked about today is kind of along these lines. And we can bring that back for a future presentation or future information, but I know we were both talking with Mark Erickson, our former city attorney. He has-
Engineer.
Yeah, engineer with WSB. And he, uh, works for, I think, for the city. Hugo's one of his clients and they've been doing a lot of stuff there, especially like in public parks and stuff like that. So again, retrofitting might not be worth it, but it's, you know, maybe it's new developments and you implement some extra things, developers may not like it, but I think long-term, it might be a good thing for them and for us, so. So we could bring some additional information back, but we thought, I mean, here it is. It's, uh, I think that clock's wrong. Uh, no, it's not, 8:20. So, I mean, we, we, we just got through number two. We gotta lose time. So it was a long special presentation, but, so I appreciate your patience.
Thank you. All right. So, uh, that does conclude our special presentations. Uh, there is nobody signed up under persons to be heard, so we will move on to the consent agenda items. Are there any that you wish to remove? If not, they consist of approving our work session meeting minutes from June 21st, 2021. B is approve our city council regular meeting minutes from June 21st, 2021. C is a resolution to approve our claims. D is a resolution to approve renewal quotation with E S R I Incorporated for ARC G I S. And E is a resolution to approve a variance for a wetland setback at 7480 Valley Creek Drive. And F is a resolution to award a contract with Minnesota Pump Works to install new pumps on lift station number 10. And G is a resolution to award a contract with Minnesota Pump Works to install new pumps on list, on lift, says list, lift station number 11. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda A through G?
So moved.
Thank you, Kathleen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. And is McGregor second at that? Further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes for O. That moves us on to our public hearings, which there are none, and our business items. So first business item is approve plans, specifications and authorize the advertisement for bid for our 2021 crack fill city projects. Mr. Adam Gavre.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, bringing this one back, we talked about it at a couple council meetings ago, was the 2021 Crack Fill Project. Um, that evening, we talked about what, what roads are proposed to be included in the improvements. They're also listed on your agenda item for this evening. Um, essentially, we have a long list of streets within, within, um, town that are experiencing some very minor pavement distresses. And, uh, we wanna get, uh, on those right now with a crack filling improvement, which seals up those longitudinal cracks that you can see as you're driving by, the transverse cracks that you can see, you can feel when you're driving over on some of these streets. And then, um, also this year, we're working in a lot of neighborhoods that have curb and gutter. And a big, big, um, improvement that city staff, public works and engineering want to do is also seal that um, joint that's between the blacktop, the asphalt pavement and the concrete curb and gutter. So, um, that's also proposed within a lot of these newer developments, Orchard Cove, Woodland Cove, Red Oak. Um, also included is the parking lot in the, uh, police department next door. So we've got the, uh, specifications, they're included in your agenda item and, uh, if it's, um, approved tonight, we'll reach out to a couple of, uh, three vendors tomorrow and get their quotes, um, turned around rather quickly and select, bring it back to council to actually award a contract and then get going on this here in August or September. If I can take any questions, otherwise there's a resolution for, um,
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, council questions?
I just have a generic question. The crack fill, is that where all the white stuff ends up on the street?
It is, yeah. The way to kind of protect more so the motors, but also the asphalt embalaging that gets put down is, is literally to put toilet paper down.
Started to be in prayer.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. Then do I have a motion for, um, let's see, um, authorizing solicitation of quotes for the 2021 Crack Fill Project?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Martenson. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. So Ms. Martenson made that motion and Ms. Refkin seconded that. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes for O. And next, um, Adam, I guess you're up again. Approve a change order for the local street improvement project.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, we've got our first change order here, uh, in front of you for discussion and consideration for the 2021 Street Improvement Project, which is ongoing. Um, working together closely with Superintendent Peters. There is a adjacent residential street, Trillium Way, that has a segment of pavement that, for whatever reason, a number of years ago was not seal-coded. And, uh, if you've driven by there, you, you might notice it's, it looks different from the rest of the neighborhood. It's a small piece, um, that's identified on the map. And you, you, if you know, if you're familiar with the area, Lotus Drive is improved and then tr- the rest of the Trillium Development has a seal code. So there's this short section about 250 feet that, um, we wanna do something with. And, uh, Mr. Peters reached out to the contractor who was doing the County Road 44 work a couple of years ago just to get a quote. And at that time, um, I'm not sure what the figure was, but it did seem expensive at the time. Now we're in the, the same neighborhood with, uh, Valley Paving. They're working on the 2021 Street Improvement Project. So we asked for a quote from them as well. They presented, uh, a quote for $15,189. And the work would be an edge mill and overlay. There is concrete curb and gutter on either side of the pavement. And this would involve a six-foot edge mill, one and a half inches deep at the concrete tapering out to nothing. And then you put a new inch and a half of pavement over the top. So that's just going to extend the, the life of this segment of road, um, and kind of fit the Lotus Drive timeline and the Trillium Way. Just, just make all the pavements there, um, a, a little bit more improved and less drastic in terms of the, the condition of the pavements. So we do believe that's a relatively fair, um, contract addition. And at the time of design, it, it wasn't discussed to, to kind of include this. And folks that have been on the council for a few years, we in the past have added maybe a segment of another road because we have that con- that paving contractor right there. So, um, I can a- answer any questions about this proposed change order, but staff recommends, uh, including it in the series project.
Any questions? I just want, so when you say tapering off, are you gonna have some, where you taper it off and it gets really thin? Is that gonna break up?
That's a good question. And just the mill tapers, we'll still put one uniform thickness of an inch and a half, the whole width of the roadway.
Okay.
You're able to do this, you kind of have to do it this way when you have a curb and gutter that you need to match in.
Yeah.
But, yep, good question. There's not just gonna be this thin sliver of new pavement that's gonna crumble away.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Yeah, if there are no other questions then, um, is there a motion to approve the change order? Would be change order one, 2021 Local Street Improvement Project?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so, um, Ms. Martenson made that motion and Ms. Refkin seconded that. All those in favor will signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes for O. We'll move on to the next one, and this is Ms. Pofus.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, tonight we are asking, uh, for an approval of a conditioner, conditional offer of employment for Mr. Jacob- Jacob Terrace for the police officer position. Advertising for two police officer positions began June 25th. Due to the difficulty in recruiting police officers across the state, the personnel committee and staff agreed that the position should remain open until filled, and staff will review applications and interview as they are received. We conducted our first round of first interviews on July 1st. Mr. Terrace emerged as a final candidate for one of the police officer positions. The personnel committee met and provided staff direction to continue with the process, the contingent offer of the process. At tonight's council meeting, we're asking the city to approve the conditional offer of employment, which I've included contingent upon successfully completing a background investigation, which is underway, a psych evaluation, and a physical exam. Mr. Terrace attended Anoka Community College, and his career began in 2017 with the City of Minneapolis Police Cadet Program. Following that, he began a full-time career as a police officer with the City of Minneapolis, and has been there for three years. Due to his experience and qualifications, the personnel committee recommends entering Mr. Terrace laterally into Level Three of the Police Officer Union Contract Pay Schedule at $35.44. So with that, I don't know if Chief Falls or Mr. Barone has anything to add, but we're asking for approval of the conditional offer of employment.
Thank you, Ms. Fous. Any questions? Questions?
We had to answer both the questions.
All right. Chief, anything?
Madam Mayor, Council, not much to add if you don't have questions, but I can assure you that this candidate is a good candidate, and I think will be a good fit.
All right.
Very excited to come and work here if everything works out.
Good, thank you. All right. So is there then a motion to approve the offer of employment for Jacob Terrace as presented in our packet?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So Ms. Refkin made that motion, and Ms. McGregor seconded that. Then any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 4-0. Thank you very much, and we're looking forward to a new officer then, hopefully. Next, we move on to staff reports. Mr. Barone.
Yes, Madam Mayor and City Council, a few items to discuss with you tonight. So our next council meeting will be two weeks from tonight, no more one-month vacations like we just had. Monday, August 2nd will be our first, our next meeting. Also in your packet, and I believe it was, I don't know if it was in this packet, or if it was in the informational packet, but we did include the grant application. Mr. Grimm was able successfully to get the, ask the county for an extension. Through last Friday, we submitted last Thursday, our grant application, it's anywhere from a range of 11,500 to 13,500 that we're asking the county for funding for. It would be a location here on city grounds.
Where are we here, do you know?
They did not indicate that, they did confirm receipt today, though, so they have received it, so, and they were happy to get it, so hopefully they'll be happy enough to give us some money.
Yeah.
So, you know, we look forward to finding out about that. We did have a fire district meeting last Thursday at our public safety facility, I'll ask Ms. Refkin, when we get to her turn on the council reports, if she'd like to give a summary of that. We also have a fire commission meeting this Wednesday, over at the city mound, it will be in person. I'll have you mark down a date of Tuesday, August 24th, I believe at 3 o'clock. We intend at that point to do the dedication of the Lyle Park Picnic Shelter. We'll have some more information, not only to council, but to the public to come soon, but that's the date and time we've selected. We're going to have ice cream of some sort, I don't know exactly how we're doing, we're looking at like an ice cream truck, there are some out there that are like for hire, but if that doesn't happen, we'll get a bunch of coolers and get some DQ treats or something, but we are not going to scoop ice cream out of.
Yes. Not a good idea.
One gallon containers in mid to late August, so that's not going to happen.
Good call. Good call.
And then, we did have a water tower construction progress meeting in July, they're on the schedule, they're so far at or under budget. And one of the things I asked them to do, and we'll know a little bit more here, hopefully in the next few weeks, but in mid-August, they plan on lifting the ball that's under construction on the ground to the top of the tower. And what I've asked SEH to do is if they could provide us with some sort of time lapse photography to take a video of that, it generally takes about a day, and that's what he said, and so they're looking into that. But I think that would be a pretty cool thing to post on our website, that's kind of the cherry on top, so to speak, of this thing. I mean, there's still a little bit of work to do between August and October, but that will be the, kind of the coolest thing, I think, about this. So we're looking into that, so.
How do they do that?
I don't know, that's why, they're engineers.
I was thinking of helicopter.
You got it, no, you know, I think you got surface mounts, a camera, you want to put it on something pretty sturdy, so you don't have, you know, construction or traffic kind of knock it over, and then you got a time lapse of the sky or something. So the idea is just to focus it on the, on the tower going up, and, you know, take a picture every minute as they do it, or something. I know they're out there, I just haven't never done it myself, so, so we're looking into that, so.
All right.
And that's all I have.
All right. And obviously, organics, you already did, so any other staff reports then? No? And I know, David, you said there is no planning commission meeting this month, so we don't need anybody there. So I'm going to start with Kathleen.
All right. So Lisa, myself, Mike, and Chief Falls, along with representatives from St. Bonnie and Mound, both the mayor from the towns, and their council, a couple council members, and both fire chiefs were at the fire district meeting on the 17th. We discussed the, having a fire district to make sure St. Bonnie is on board, and they said they are open to it. Discussed potential roadblocks to having a district such as the ownership of the department, and the firemen being loyal to their apartment and their badge. Neither chief thought that would be too big of a hurdle to get over, since both of the departments already work together, they're doing a softball game together, and they're using blue cards together, and they're already working on training together, so it'll be a hurdle, but not hopefully too big of one, since both departments have a good working relationship as well. Right now, we're just discussing a fire district with Mound and St. Bonnie, and then pending how well that goes, we would look to join or add in the other towns that Mound and St. Bonnie both also service. Mound is still waiting for their duty officer vehicle to arrive. It was supposed to be here in May, they're waiting for parts like everyone else who wants a new vehicle. Once they get theirs, they, St. Bonnie plans to buy their old one, and then they will be able to implement a duty officer program, hopefully targeting the beginning of the year in January. We did ask how much Mound is paying for their duty vehicle, and everything in it, the vehicle, and then putting all the equipment and everything there, he said around like $44,000, so not insanely expensive for one. We did specifically ask St. Bonnie if their guys are interested in doing the duty officer program, they said yes, so that was good. Mound currently has the duty program, weekdays from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, and then 24/7 on the weekends. They pay, it costs about $5,000 more a year, so again, not insanely expensive for the program they have. He said it's working great. If we do the fire district, they'd like to do a duty crew, which would be two to four people on call for the times pending, when they get more calls. Assuming Mound and St. Bonnie switch to the 24/7 duty person, not a crew, just a person, so if they're both on it 24/7, it would be about an additional $175,000 a year.
Yeah, but it didn't, it would also be offset by the full.
Yeah, you wouldn't be paying for all the other people to go to all the other calls and everything, either. And that was just a rough estimate from the Mound city administrator during the meeting. We discussed that Minatrista does have one acre reserved on the commercial property on Highway 7 and Kings Point Road to put in a satellite station. Both Mound and St. Bonnie thought that would be beneficial, just for the calls going into Woodland Cove, and then to Hunter's Crest, and Palmer's Point, and anything just along seven, easier for them to get to the calls, basically. At your next meeting with St. Bonnie, it might be good to push them and say that we really want to get that moving.
Okay.
And not wait, and see if they'd be willing to help pay for it. Mound, we have an agreement with them that they would help cover some of the cost of it. St. Bonnie, we don't have such an agreement, so like to get them on board. If we do switch to a full fire district, it would probably be about three to five years to fully implement it, assuming we use the existing facilities and staff, and there's not too much changing of things. Like I said, there's the Mound Fire Meeting on the 21st, and I'll be attending that. Any questions on the fire district meeting?
You covered it well.
There's a lot of stuff.
Yeah, it was.
It was a good meeting.
It was about an hour and a half.
Yeah.
And a lot of, lot of information, but, and we basically said we want St. Bonnie to do, to implement the fire, the duty crew starting '22. We felt it was very beneficial, especially with our growth being in that area, and Chief Falls agreed and supported that, so we pushed for that, it sounds like it's going to happen, so that's good, but, yeah, bring that up to.
I will.
Yeah, okay. Good, thank you.
I also attended the planning commission meeting back in June on the 28th, and we discussed the pool that we approved today, and that was it.
Okay. Yeah?
I attended a meeting for the Gillespie Center because, to help plan their October 15th, 16th, there's a formal dates now, for their anniversary event. They are thrilled, they are getting rentals like crazy right now.
Good.
They're able to build their donations higher, everything is working out really, really well for the Gillespie Center, and they're throwing themselves into this event. It's going to be a Friday night, about 200-person dinner that they want to have, they're going to sell tickets for it, and they want to have a silent auction, and they're starting into the plans for that, and then they want to have a family day on Saturday, from like 10 to 2, and have a bunch of things there. What they want from us is a Minatrista display, I don't know that we have something that's already been set up in the past that we can use, but they want some kind of a Minatrista display that gives some historical factors about Minatrista that can be viewed on that Saturday by families.
Ah, piece of cake, though.
That's a good answer, though.
Like I said, piece of cake.
Actually, if you contact the Historical Society, they would probably have that easier. Yeah.
That's under other duties.
You said, what dates is this?
It's October 15th and 16th, and if, and I believe you were going to be contacted, Madam Mayor, because they want you to speak on Saturday the 16th.
Okay.
Aren't you on vacation? No. I know I am.
And that's all.
All right. Anything, Pam?
On the 1st, I attended the Sergeant Mike Kokish Retirement Open House, it was very nice and highly attended. WCC, I don't have a meeting to report on for that. And on the 9th, I was involved with the Personnel Committee Meeting for the police officer position and progress.
Great. Yeah, I attended the open house for Mr. Kokish, or Sergeant Kokish at the time, so, and the Personnel Committee Meeting. And that's been about it. Northwest League is not meeting in July and August, so the next meeting will be in September, and I will not be at the fire meeting on this Wednesday. So with that, I think we are done. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. Is there a second?
Seconds.
Okay. Ann beat you to it.
That's fine.
All right.